Here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Pembroke School Committee Meeting for Thursday, November 6th, 2025. This meeting will be recorded. If you have questions, they can be emailed to scinfo@pembrokek12.org. If you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm not sure, can the studio audience hear the feedback at all? Or is that just here in the room, if that makes sense? It's just in the room. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Yep. So we're hearing a little bit of feedback on IRN. So we have no public comment? Acknowledge your visitors. Nobody adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments? Communications?
So there's a whole bunch of amazing things happening over the next few days here in Pembroke, and Allison's going to tell you all. She wrote them down.
I wrote them all down.
I was going to do it from memory, but she's written them down.
Right now Pembroke is hosting Norwood at 6:00, so if you can still make it.
That must be where everyone is at the football game.
And that's where Joe is. Cheerleading travels to Duxbury for their Patriot League competition at 7:15, which I don't know if that was today.
Yeah, it's tonight.
Yeah. So there's cross-country states on Sunday. Saturday volleyball, I think it's the Elite Eight is at Medfield at Saturday at 2:30. Boys soccer also, I believe.
Round of 16.
Round of 16 versus NIMPUK at Pembroke.
NIPMUC.
NIPMUC at noon on, at home at high school. And then the Hobymoff Playground Ribbon Cutting is set for 9:30 a.m. on the 14th.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. And then the Suzical, which is the high school thespian production, is on Thursday, December 4th at 7:00, Friday, December 5th at 7:00, and Saturday, December 6th at 2:00 p.m. And there are a handful of fifth and sixth graders who are participating, including one of my children. So very excited for that. So those are a couple of things going on in the schools.
Thank you. You did write them down.
Is there a rain date for the ribbon cutting?
No. We'll keep an eye on the forecast if that weekend looks like it will.
The kids are definitely ready. My daughter's already planning a playdate to play on that playground. Woo, woo, you're ready.
Well, thank you for your part in that project. That was great. Approval of the bill's schedule? We are doing that by hand. Okay. I need a motion for consideration for approval for the school committee meeting minutes of October 7th.
So moved. Second.
Okay. I've got a first from Katrina, a second from Allison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Abstaining is no one. 5-0 Natalie. It's unanimous in honor of Patrick. Yay. Achievement Report.
It's Mayor Beth's favorite night of the year, and the one I know that you guys have just been anxiously waiting to hear. She's going to talk about our, it's our annual installment of the Achievement Report, a little bit about MCAS, some AP exams, some additional information about SAT and ACT, talking about kind of some of our gains, some of our challenges, and where we're looking to go next. So.
I would say this year, we have quite a lot of data as we do every year when we get to this point. And if you have questions as we go through it, please stop me. You can also feel free to collect them, and we can answer them at the end, whichever way is best for you. But I would be remiss if I didn't note that my teaching and learning team, that is Gwynn Chapman, Mark Galligan, Savice, and Jonathan Shapiro, Melinda Solavoda, and we also have Mike Tinker and Megan Callum that join us regularly, and also our Pathways Coordinator, Mary Ellen Gates. This is really a joint effort. There's a lot of thought that goes into this and a lot of thinking about what our kids need and where we should be headed in the next few years. The data is a little bit conflicting, so I think it'll be a good conversation for us to take a look at. I want to also just keep in mind, especially for our older test takers, our more senior test takers, that would have been our sophomores last year, they were acutely aware of the fact that the test no longer is a competency determination. So keeping that in mind and the sort of the contrast that you're going to see with the AP scores and then SAT and ACT is very, it's a little bit confusing. So it will be fun to take a look at it as a group. We'll start obviously with MCAS. Some of this stuff is information that you've seen before, but that's just the history of when the tests, what the last five years of testing has looked like since the pandemic in particular. A lot of this information is spelled out because it does stand alone on the website. So feel free to stop me, but I think most of this is information that you're aware of. You know what the range of reporting looks like for MCAS. All of you here have children that are taking, or Katrina will eventually, taking MCAS. And those are the range of scores that parents receive in a beautiful document that indicates for you some progress reports for your students as they go through Pembroke Public Schools. I usually start with the high school because the high school used to be a more high-stakes competency determination determining who was actually going to be eligible for graduation. Although there were always, just to be clear, there were always retests, and there were always a way for us to appeal a decision to the state if a student was struggling with that test. This year's score you can see is significantly lower than last year's and than what we've been in the past, which again, when we get to take a look at the AP exams and we look at the SAT scores, it's going to be a little confusing because our students are definitely performing very well on the high-risk sort of high-stakes tests unless, I think it was just sort of, I'm hoping it was a sort of a one-year blip where kids were like, oh, it doesn't matter. But we'll see how, we'll see how that plays out in the future.
Do we have the state data to compare it to?
Yeah, the state data is right there on the right. So you can see.
Okay.
Yep.
I can't see any of, I can't see this or that.
All right. Let me help you with that.
Helping me today.
The state data is there. Let me see. So I know the state data is 51.
51%.
51 for this. And so we are just below the state, which is really not a place you want to be. So that's of concern in regards to what did happen last year. Was it something that's an anomaly? Or is this something that we need to take a look at in terms of some sort of curriculum instruction or assessment issue that we might have to dig deeper into? So we continue, we know where our, we know where our students score well, and we know where our students struggle. We know in grade, oh, sorry. We know in grade 10 for ELA, our biggest struggles are in writing and in the essay, whereas students tend to do very well with the language and the reading. So it's a kind of a mixed bag, and I think that it speaks to some of the challenges that you have when you have an on-demand test like this. When we exist in a world where we're always having kids revise, 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 it'll get better. And then you're taking this test and it's a certain amount of work needs to get done in that daytime, and kids are not used to that. So one of the things that teachers are doing, not only for the fact that, not only to reflect the MCAS expectations, but also because of AI and other tools that are available to students, is doing more on-demand writing for students in classrooms, just as a way to practice that skill. Our kids are certainly able to do it. It's just a more, it's just not as prevalent as it used to be probably when we were all in school. So it's something that we're continuing to focus on. That math, again, not, not great when you look at where we were last year. And again, with the state.
State was 45.
Yeah. So a little bit better than the state, but nothing. That's good, but not in terms of the trend that we want to see, right? We don't want to be going backwards. We want to be going forward.
So the state is 45 and what are we?
No, we're 51. Yeah.
Did the states see drop-offs on these same, like?
Yep. The state did see some of those drop-offs, but some of ours, I feel, were a little bit deeper in some of our areas. Conversely, the 10th, the eighth grade, the 10th grade was kind of our big, where we had some drops. Our grades three through six actually gained some ground and did well. So it was a very interesting set of results, but it sort of reflects our philosophy too, because we've always looked at the three to six, actually the three to eight, as very diagnostic. It's our information. It's for us to reflect on how we're, what materials are we using? How are we instructing? How are we assessing? So I don't think for that, those grade spans, three to six, there was much of a change in terms of the routine and what they did. It was never really a high-stakes kind of a test for those students. But I think for the older students that were a little bit more aware of the political situation around the test, there was a little bit less commitment to the work.
Did we, let me just, did we change any kind of curriculum, or is this the same as it was five years ago?
No, it's changed in the elementary level. So if you recall, we implemented UFLY a few years ago. We're starting to see some gains with that in the third and the fourth grade. We have started this year, well, we also did a lot with math in the past two years in terms of redesigning benchmarks and putting them on a platform that mirrors the MCAS. So we're seeing some, some very nice gains, three to six, seeing some really, some bright spots. And this year, again, to address the writing component, which we're seeing, everybody's seeing, it's not, this is not at all specific to Pembroke. The decline in the sort of the writing and the essay writing is a national phenomenon. That is not just here. One of the things that we're doing that we're very excited about is we are piloting a program under Melinda's direction called Simplify Writing, which a number of our teachers, I think about 33 of our teachers, have engaged in and are using for their professional development time. And they are loving it and seeing some really positive things already, which is great. It's only been a couple of months. A few of them did it last year too, but now it's a little bit more widespread. We also, Melinda is running after-school professional development with an anchor text called The Writing Revolution, which many of our teachers are also attending and implementing in classrooms. So I think we're seeing a lot of excitement and a lot of energy in those three to six, those three to six grade spans around some of these shifts that we're trying to make. So.
So I'm just trying to understand, so like, I guess, five years ago, the, you know, these kids were in like, you know, fifth grade.
Yes. So these kids missed some tough years with the COVID, the COVID sort of years. They were definitely like that fifth, sixth, seventh grade, which really was, you know, those kind of fractional years where 2020, they did not have an exam. 20, I have the cohort data for you later on in the presentation, but they didn't have an exam in 2020. They had a half of an exam in 2021, and then back to 2022, which is why the state is always asking us to take a look at 2019. So what has happened since 2019? And trying to say like, well, the goal should really be to be, have your achievement levels at that same place. But one of the things that I think the state is disregarding is that the impact of those years has changed the learners in front of us. And you've heard that said at this table many, many times, right? Our students are different now, and we have to think of better ways to engage them, and we have to make some shifts in our curriculum and instruction in order to make sure that they are learning the standards that Massachusetts requires them to learn. So. That's the gist of it, I would say. Then you can see some of the trends in terms of where our students fall. Biology held steady. Again, I would say to you that students, when they're taking an exam based on one subject area that entails one year of instruction, tend to do better. So remember that the students taking that 10th grade exam, the last exam they took was in the eighth grade in terms of ELA or math. So sometimes those spiraling types of exams can be a bit of a stretch for some of our students too. But the biology is strong, which makes me very happy because as we go through and take a look at the, some of the science score in grade eight, it's concerning, but the rebound is real. So that part is really good. And then when we look at our AP scores and the number of students that are accessing AP Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, they're very strong. So it's, like I said, it's a little bit confusing, and I don't want to put too much emphasis on a test that students were told no longer matters for their graduation. But for us, it's important to know where their, where the gaps are in their curriculum or in their content knowledge so that we can make sure that they're prepared going forward.
And what's the difference between the state and?
The state's 46 and we're 67.
Thank you.
That's just how they break out for themselves. One of the motivators for our students, though, taking the MCAS test, especially in grade 10, and they are allowed to take retests to meet this bar if necessary, is the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Opportunities for kids, that sort of lays out, that's, that data on the bottom there is a little bit old. I'm expecting that those awards have gone up, but they haven't changed their website. They haven't changed any of the numbers on the website. I wasn't, didn't want to go out there and create numbers on my own, but just, there's just a thing there to let you know. But still, students are motivated by this, and this is a nice caveat and a nice reward for our students that are achieving at a, at a high level on MCAS. This just explains how you are eligible. You have to score in the exceeding expectations in one of the three, and then meeting expectations in the other two. And also have a combined MCAS score that ranks in the top 25%. Three to eight English Language Arts district-wide, we are at 41%.
The state's the same.
And the state is the same. And I would say that's, that's a little bit skewed by our eighth grade. This shows you our grade seven and our grade eight ELA. PCMS is at 43 in grade seven, and the state's at 42. Rather close. And grade eight had a very big dip to 30% meeting or exceeding expectations, whereas the state was at 44. So when we see results like this, the next question is like, what are we doing? Like, what happened? What, what's going on? So we know about that there was some issues in the political climate. But aside from that, what's really important to us is do we have the right tools? Are we using the right things? Are we implementing the right benchmarks? Are we getting the right information before kids are being expected to perform on these exams? I know that Dr. Galligan is spending a lot of time this year with revising the benchmarks, but everything is on the table when you start to see declines like this. So they're looking at the benchmarks. They're working deeply with the No Red Ink program. They're looking at the curriculum again to make sure that it is aligned. And I don't really think it's an alignment issue as much as it is, as he has identified. The writing is, continues to be a struggle for our kids. They're doing better with the reading and the language than they are with the writing. So.
And five years prior to that would have been third grade?
Yes.
And that's COVID time, and that's a huge era of time in which kids learn how to write, is third grade.
Yeah, they, they had a tough third, fourth, fifth. That was tough, right? So they had some of those years where their education was fraught with people wearing masks and just things that I think make the learning environment a whole lot more difficult, especially for young learners, not being able to see or hear sometimes what was going on. So anyways, they, they're looking at everything. I just don't want to be cavalier about the fact that, you know, looking at that score was like, whoa, what happened? But it's compounded by the fact that when we start to look at some of our scores in the AP category, there seems to be tremendous rebound as our students mature through high school and have set their goals and are identifying where they want to be. And in particular, when we get to the AP section, we have a lot of students who are not necessarily identified by the PSAT scores to join an AP class, who are self-selecting and going into it anyways, which is a great culture to have. Kids feel like they can give it a try, and I think you're going to see that as, as they mature. So I'm hoping that some of this is maturity. Some of it will be being really clear about our unit exams and our benchmark exams to be sure that we're pinpointing where students are struggling early and intervening as quickly as possible. And then I, I'm expecting that we're going to see some gains. So.
Can I have a question about, so for like either, for PCMS?
Yep.
Are you able to break down the data between the two or three even levels of classes? Like, is there a difference between, because the curriculum is slightly different between accelerated?
And accelerated and grade level?
And grade level. So I'm curious if, if it's a difference in that, or if it's the, the percentages are about the same, regardless of which class.
I think the percentages are about the same. I think you would see an uptick with the accelerated group, but the number one concern is the writing across the board. So that is not just endemic to the grade level class. It is also a struggle for our accelerated students as well.
I just had a quick question. So those would be our current ninth graders?
Yes.
Correct.
So in ELA, and you may not have this answer, but those students, how are they performing right now in ninth grade ELA?
So they just finished their first quarter.
Right. So it's only going to be limited, limited data. Yeah.
So we really don't have a lot of data on that yet, but the teachers are very fortunate. The program that they're working with, that No Red Ink program, they, they can see where students were last year. So they can immediately begin to identify where some of those gaps are.
Okay. So they have that data? Got it. Yeah. Just curious if, if the current teachers are seeing gaps.
They're also, they also spend some time, the ninth grade teachers, looking at this as well. So they're, they're well-versed in the areas that they, that they need to focus on.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
And, you know, same, same for mathematics. Mathematics a little bit, a little bit stronger, and we are seeing a little bit of a stronger performance in mathematics, which is really counterintuitive to the way I was thinking during the pandemic. For some reason, in my brain, I would have forecasted that, oh, wow, you know, mathematics will become much more difficult for students. But in reality, what became harder was the writing and the reading for students, which I just thought, oh, well, they can do that at home, and the math might require more specialized instruction, but it was the exact opposite. So be careful what you try to predict.
What was the state number? What was?
For this?
Yeah.
It's on the next one.
What is? Sorry. Oh, there it is. Perfect. I can see that.
Five to eight science. Again, that number is a little bit skewed. The grade five science test was about 50% and the grade eight science test was 27%, which we are continuing to realign the OpenSciEd curriculum. But we've also implemented, OpenSciEd was developed in a way that I really thought was interesting. So they take these questions, phenomena questions, like one is about natural disasters. So they try to determine like, why does a tsunami happen? So it leads to these great conversations and some great classroom work, but the curriculum didn't really come with a lot of formal assessment tools. So the teachers have been developing those as they go. And they also initially followed the Massachusetts, what Massachusetts had recommended as a curriculum pathway. And what turned out to be a better fit was the National Science Standards. So they've had to make a few adjustments with that, but I'm, I like the excitement that I'm seeing in those classes, and I like the rebound that we see in grade nine. And I also, again, would point to the high number of students enrolled in our AP classes. Although I think we're still tweaking how to, how to assess these standards at this time. I think we're going, we're going to be able to manage that. I think that's going to come together. So.
Quick question. I know that you talked about with math, there is a dashboard that you use for assessments. Is it possible to also use that for science?
Yeah. So Edge Elastic could be used for that as well. It's just this particular curriculum, the six to eight curriculum is a little bit wonky because it's not, I think they could use it. I'm not exactly sure, but it's written in a different way.
Got it.
So I think there are probably some questions that they could utilize in that, in that dashboard, but I'm not 100% sure.
Totally. Yeah. Just wondering if we can, what tools we can use to make it easier.
Right. And to have a bank of questions, right? So what the teachers have been doing is using, obviously, the MCAS, what's released, whatever is released, and taking a look at the standards. There are definitely banks of questions that they can utilize that are related to the standards. But what was kind of happening, and again, to be fair to the students, you're taking a test in grade eight, on material that you learn in six, seven, and eight. That's always going to be a bigger challenge than the test that encompasses one year of material. So.
What was the state number for that?
42.
Thank you.
As I already mentioned, that's the, the results for the grade eight Science, Technology, and Engineering course. Grade eight civics. So one other thing that I should point out, in case you aren't really paying attention, is that the grade eight students had four exams. So four exams, two testing sessions each. That's quite a lot of on-demand kind of, kind of work. We don't do that in any other grade level. The civics, this was the first year of civics, and we will be able to take a look at those results and see where we need to focus for next year again. This is an interesting assessment because there's an end-of-course assessment, and then there's a performance task assessment to it as well. So it's a pretty, it's, it's a very challenging test, and it's really interesting. And I think, I mean, I love it because I'm a history major or what have you, but students are being asked in grade eight to compare documents to each other and to talk. It's a very in-depth end-of-course exam about, about the Constitution basically, and about the founding fathers, and about our early history. And it is fascinating, but it is very rigorous. So I think that once we sort of get a, get a grasp on how to assess each of those units and spiral back, and I think that's what's a little bit tricky about it, that spiraling back stuff is a little bit harder in this test, because it's kind of fragmented in terms of the Constitution, early history, Enlightenment theory. I mean, it just spans it all. So I think once we figure out how to keep that spiraling, I think that would be, we'll start to see some movement there too.
And it's a newer test as well.
Brand new.
So they probably have their own test modifications that they're going to need to make to align to what they're asking to be taught.
Right. Again, another great class. If you were to observe it and walk into it, it's like, it's very energetic. Kids are highly engaged in it. It's very interesting. A lot of current events. That tends to be where, you know, somebody might say, hey, did you see this? And it's a course that kids like, and they like talking about the topic. So it's a, it's a great class. Now we need to see some, you know, some gains.
How long have we been, been teaching the curriculum?
The civics curriculum?
Yeah.
I want to say like three years maybe, maybe of four. Yeah. Something like that. I can't remember. But it's funny, when I started teaching back in the Dark Ages, civics was the grade eight curriculum. And then they moved it, and then they moved it back. So it kind of comes and goes depending on, depending on sort of, I guess, politics in a way, but now it's a requirement by the state. So.
Do you happen to know, you probably don't, wouldn't know this off the top yet, but do you happen to know how many towns and cities in Massachusetts chose to keep the graduation requirement, the MCAS graduation requirement?
I'm not aware of any that did.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if that was skewing the data, but like, I don't know.
No. Other, other districts, you'll see when we get to like, sort of look at the Patriot League and we look at our Dart schools, other districts, no, they, they did not see some of the same dips that we saw. So.
Okay.
You know, I, again, we're trying to figure it out. We're looking at the data. We're looking at where our kids performed well and where we can support them better. But it wasn't across the board. I don't, I don't know if anybody. But it wasn't across the board. I don't I don't know of anybody so far, at least around here, that's kept the MCAS as a requirement.
And is the testing window the same for all schools?
Yes.
So it's not like.
In Massachusetts, yeah.
It seems like they're taken so early in the year.
You have you have a window and you can plan it, but it's most of the testing starts in March at grade 10 and then it's a little bit later for grades three through eight.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, just because, you know, we start school so late and yet they make the test, you know, two-thirds the way through.
Well, especially for AP, but not, you know, for the MCAS that goes all the way into June for the science test. So it feels like it goes on forever.
Yeah.
So just again, some of this is already answered, but how do we use the data that we get? One of the things that we get from the state is an item analysis. We know where each kid scored. We know if they're above the state, below the state. We can we can see a lot of really good things and that's where we get a lot of our trends. These reports are particularly helpful for our teachers and for the content supervisors because you can see the patterns, you can see the strands, you can see specific things that students should be focusing on or where, you know, we might, sometimes there is an easy thing and we say, oh, my gosh, we just didn't teach that unit or we didn't get to that unit. That makes sense. And then sometimes you think, oh, my gosh, I taught that all year long and what happened? So you're trying to figure that out as you go. And always keeping in mind, there are different classes and every class has its own personality and flavor in terms of how they approach academics. So it's a fun problem. We also break down our data based on our student populations. One of the populations that we look at a lot are high-needs students. High-needs students are anybody that's in every other category. So for example, high-needs includes students who are special needs. It includes students who are on low income. It includes a big group. So that gives us some data to take a look at. And we look at the other groups as well. What's the difference? What's the gap? What can we do to to narrow the gap? And do those students need something different or do they need something more? What can we do to adjust for each of the groups?
That's great to see that we're doing better than the state there.
That might be an older one.
Oh, well.
But we still were doing better than the state.
Okay, good.
We actually said.
Statement stands.
Grades three through six, 75% of our students scored higher than the state, so.
That's great.
That three to six results were strong results with some areas that we knew were going to be problematic. But for the most part, I'd say there's a lot of energy going on three to six and a lot of positivity there. I would say that we're seeing those students in grade seven and eight very productive in classrooms, doing good work in classrooms, but it didn't seem to translate into the assessment, which is concerning. And I'm not really sure what happened in grade 10 because the data that, you know, as those students move forward and they're challenging themselves in grade 10, we have the highest percentage of students ever that took an AP exam and they did well. I don't really, it's very confusing. So we're trying to tease it out a little bit and see what, see what it is. So this is for our our current graduating students. You can see what their performance was since grade four. In grade three, our class of 2025 took Park, which I don't know if you guys remember that, but Park was a short, short-lived adventure here in Massachusetts based on Common Core standards. Then this year's class, you can see, so you can see that the, you know, in in seventh and eighth grade, there sometimes is a little bit of a dip, but there's always a rebound by grade 10. That's very typical, that rebound. And this is our current data for our students who are now in grade 11, who will be the class of 2027. Obviously.
You guys are not going crazy. Mary Beth, move some of the slides around.
I see.
For them, please move them.
Oh, I added to cohorts. I add, so I thought you'd be interested. After I gave you that, I was like, oh, you might want to see these, too.
Can you go back? Can you can you start at 2025 again?
Sure. So this was in, that's 2026. In 2025, this was in last year's data, too, just so you could see what the graduating class, what they what they kind of looked at. And again, just this is just so that we can see that particular class. Have they always performed better than the state? Or did something happen that year? What's going on? So that, and you can see that there's always a gap, obviously, for 2020. And you have to keep in mind that 2021 was a half test. It wasn't the full MCAS test. So lots of interesting kind of little tweaks. When you're trying to compare, you're comparing a lot of times two disparate things. This is our class of 2026. 2020, they were home for COVID. 2021, they had the half of the test. And then 2022, you start to see them rebounding. And this is just confusing, so.
Great.
Again, looking at the gaps that occurred when, you know, somebody is in grade five and grade six, when you have that 2020 year, and then 2021, that exam was half of the exam. So it's just a little bit hard to compare some of it. But nobody wants to see that ELA score going like that, right? No, like something, something's going on and it'll be interesting. I mean, I'm at a point where I was like, maybe we should even just survey the kids and see like, what were you thinking? You know, what was going on?
Oh, yeah.
It might just be interesting to hear what they they were thinking at the time.
Yeah, or what they, what effort they feel they, like they could rate their effort that they took on MCAS.
Yeah, because I was thinking that like.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, some of this, we're just, we're just sort of weeding our way through some of it, but.
It could be worth getting some information.
I just remember Park clearly because I was at the high school during that year and they were like drawing turkeys and, you know, coloring in their test book because Park also did not count towards their graduation requirement. So I feel like that really set the stage, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't really know.
Last year, they did report that the students in the testing sessions were done faster.
Yeah.
Which usually.
If you have smart kids and they know it doesn't count, like, I mean, I know myself, I would not put all that into that.
I remember one of my tests and one of my MCAS tests in middle school didn't count for something and I absolutely did not try.
Yeah, but that was not the case in other communities, so I I'm reluctant to do the because. I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm still feel like we need to figure some of it out.
100%.
It would be interesting to hear from students, you know, a year later, what what happened? What did you think?
So I know that program that they use at the elementary level where they can put in, they can see if the kids are just like clicking through.
Uh huh.
Is there any way, like, there's probably not a way to do that with this, right? To know if the kids are just like A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, like or something.
Itemized to see if they just did like As across or like specifically would have to drill down to the kid level.
Because I know they can see that with the elementary.
Yeah, with the Edge Elastic program that we've adopted, you can see how long a kid's taking on a test. You can say to a student, if they're hesitating, take your time and go back. You can do some of that. You really can't do that with MCAS. You're not supposed to engage at that level with students. You can't even ask them questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if there was like some sort of a consequence-based thing you could do the following year? If they didn't do a certain level, they have to follow up with a certain class the next year?
Instead of consequence, maybe an opportunity for something instead of a consequence.
Then they might want to try because they don't want to get below a certain level or, you know what I mean? I don't know. That's just a thought.
For a test that doesn't matter?
Right.
That's what I mean. So you'd have to have a motivated factor like as a politician.
Leeen Flashman, School Speaker. I definitely have heard some chatter between parents that the test doesn't matter and then telling their kids to not. So I don't know. That makes it hard. I don't know if there's any statistical analysis you can do to see how much of that or if there's chatter between the kids. Kids don't, kids are pretty open about, ah, whatever, didn't matter.
Again, I was very heartened by the three to six results.
Thank you.
I feel like the students were were really, it was not really a big change. The test never really did matter, right? There was no high stakes associated with it. I think our seventh to 10th graders knew what was happening politically and so there might have been a piece of that. We do every year get a number of parents that want to opt out. Opt out is not an option. There's, there is no such thing as an opt-out for MCAS. We are required by law to present the test to students and they can choose to take it or not, but we are required to present it to them, so.
Where does this stop test data, how does that fall? Does that fall that did not exceed, like that does not?
Excuse me?
So like the kids that when they stop test, like when they.
It would be does not meet expectations.
So that's the not meeting expectations? Like if the kid doesn't complete it or refuses or whatnot?
Right.
That's the red?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a way to capture that?
Yes, so you can capture that and at the ninth grade and 10th grade level, you can retake those tests. So that's a possibility, too. And right now.
I think what she's asking is if you can see in the red, if it's truly kids that didn't pass, they gave answers and it wasn't enough or they just didn't take it.
Oh, yes. So sometimes this year, I would have to double-check with Dr. Gallagher, but some years we can get their essays back and some years we don't. It depends on the year because they're trying to preserve the integrity of some of those questions. And we can tell right away what was going on, you know, la, 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 or, you know, a student that, yes, so.
Or just like literally did not fill out a single thing or something like that.
We can see that.
I mean, that truly is my concern that like we don't really have a way to measure, you know, how well the student's doing, especially if this test doesn't matter. And so how do we make it matter so that we have some sort of a measure that these kids are?
So we have measures, right? We have benchmarks.
We have benchmark assessments. We have unit tests. We have.
Kids are passing the final exam in 10th grade English and 10th grade math.
Yeah, they're passing.
Sure, but we're not compared to other districts. Do you know what I mean? Like this is like, okay, how is the rest of the state doing as compared to Pembroke? Are we on track in sending our kids off to college with the same knowledge or out in the world with the same knowledge as everybody else in the state?
The shift that we saw last year was that the the vote in public decided that that was a local decision to decide what what does it mean to define prepared? What is a student that is prepared? So there is no longer a comparison between what is Pembroke saying is prepared and what is Duxbury saying is prepared. It doesn't have to be the same anymore.
I think I think the vote, if I could be mistaken, but I feel like the vote was more along the lines of like, it's not fair to all the students that they have to pass it because there's students that are really not great test takers, right? And MCAS, you sort of like doesn't allow students on the, you know, like that.
That's not true. So that 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 isn't true. So MCAS, you could always retake the test and it was always an appeals process. I think voters did not want student graduation tied to one to a test in the.
In addition to local graduation standards, which we've always had, right? So you had to pass the MCAS and these, complete these 25 courses, 88 credits, whatever it was.
Right. They didn't want that additional measurement added to their graduation requirement.
And to your point, by taking away that additional measurement, it takes away our ability to see, to benchmark ourselves against somebody else, right? Because we, I don't know what kids are getting on the unit exam in biology and handover. I have no idea.
Right.
I only know what they're getting here.
Right.
But I also think that part of the solution is, has to be state-level legislative advocacy because I don't think that, you know, we can't make something that's going to be comparable across districts because we don't control what happens across districts. So I 100% agree that I'm concerned in the same, in a similar way to you. But I just don't think that us as a, as a school district can solve that from Pembroke School Committee. I think it will have to be some kind of legislative advocacy to get another solution that better, and I don't know what that is. I can't say that I know that. But I I would be interested in advocating for a different solution that will allow for comparison across districts that isn't tied to graduation. But I just don't know how we solve that.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I I agree with you. We do have to come up with some other solution. I think there's an in-between, though. I don't know what it is. I think it needs some more brainstorming, of course, and I think you're obviously figuring, trying to figure that out as well.
Yeah.
But.
But to your point, Sue, so here's how we compare to our peers in the Patriot League, okay? So you can see we fell below the state in in our ELA scores, just above in math and did better in science.
Yeah.
So what is it, what what was going on last year? Because those those scores are significantly lower than they were the year before for our students. So that's, you know, maybe, maybe it's, we just don't know yet. We have, and I'd love to say because, because I'm, it's like on the tip of my tongue. I can, I could come up with a solution and give you a solution, but I don't know that it's accurate and I I'm reluctant to jump out there. But when we have a situation where students are not performing, where we would like to see them performing, the best thing we can do is go back to the curriculum, go back to instruction and go back to assessment and make sure, student by student, that we have a really strong profile of what kind of learner they are and what they need and what broke down, which is why I really would love to hear from our juniors, just what, in reflection.
I think it's a great idea.
Right? And maybe even after the test, just a quick exit ticket for kids at the end of the 10th grade test. You know, what did you think? How did it go? Just just to have a little bit, it would be anecdotal at best, probably, but it would give us something to try to understand how students are viewing this because I do think that's a piece that we're a little bit missing.
Yeah.
Are there differences between elementary schools? Like, are they all fairly?
In the district?
Yeah, here.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit.
And I think that probably has partially, I know that Bryanville has more, a higher population of students who are on the higher needs aspect of things.
Actually, it's not that much higher.
Not that much higher. Last time I looked, it was.
North and Bryanville are pretty close.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That might have changed since I looked last.
Yeah. And these are our Dart schools. So again, that that one-year exam, we're kind of holding our own, but even last year we were higher, you know, so. So what do they do with all this information that is now optional? So what do they do? So then the state gets our our scores. They take our scores and they say, based on your 2024 score, your 2025 score should be this. They give you a projected target. And if you meet the target, they give you points for meeting the target. They get you, you get points for exceeding the target. You get a point for getting better. You get no points if you don't do well, if you go down. So they come together. That's called the criterion measurement. They measure all kinds of things aside from actual achievement scores. They look at student growth and they also look at the high school level. They look at attendance. They look at your dropout rate. They look at the number of courses that students are taking that are considered highly rigorous courses. So there's a whole formula involved with that to help us to to have an idea of how we are meeting our targets. All of our schools are making moderate progress towards towards their targets, so everybody is is making progress. And then they also, after they sort of take this mathematical equation, they they then roll that in to get all together with this accountability data and then they rate you against other schools that are like you. So for example, let's take a look at, I think it's North. Is that 71% there? So North is performing 71% better than other schools in the district, in the in the Commonwealth, sorry, in the district, in the Commonwealth. So there's, that's how, what they take a look at. Again, our accountability and our, you know, we're not in a situation, a few years ago, I think, I don't know, a few years ago, we were in a situation at the middle school where we had to do a turnaround year and, you know, really the state came in and said, you got to clean this up. This has to get better. We need to see some better performance here. So we're nowhere near that. So that's a positive thing, okay? So we're making progress. People are working hard and people are curious about sort of what happened with some of this testing last year and looking for answers. And and I know that we will be able to to meet our students and make sure that they're getting what they need.
So just to understand that graph a little better?
Yeah.
So the orange bar is?
That's your comparison. That's your accountability, like percentile rating. So that compares you to other schools in the Commonwealth and the blue is your performance against targets. And the blue, so the blue is all in what they call, you're making moderate progress towards your targets.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So if you were at 100%, you would be, you know, probably exceeding your targets or meeting all your targets, right?
Got it.
What's coming up? Just for more fun, always a change in the testing world. They will have an interactive portion. We've been talking about this for a few years, but the 2026 science test will have an additional piece, much like the civics test had last year, an interactive sort of piece, which is a problem-solving task is what they call it, but it will be interesting for them. Obviously, I've been talking about these things throughout the night. What do we do next? We don't just take a look at this and say, oh, well, what we want to do is get better, right? We want to, we want to be able to support our students where they are. So there's a lot going on in terms of making sure that students are are getting what they need and being looked at closely so that we can tell for each student where where they, where do they need support? And some of the things we're doing district-wide will be embedded in that work. Especially, I think, I'm very excited about the writing work that's being done at the, at the grades three through six. And I see that as something that will continue to extend. A lot of our professional development, we, this year, we allowed teachers to select what they wanted to work on for professional development. And a lot of our teachers at the middle school chose the literacy, to work on literacy and to look at these things. So they're deep in it right now in terms of trying to make sure that our kids are getting what they need. And then this is where it gets really confusing. So our AP participation is is very good. 80% of our kids at the high schools who took an AP scored a three or better. Again, that's can be helpful depending on what school you go to. That's something that could be utilized for additional credits at at a college, depending on the college. Our participation by class, 70% of our seniors took an AP. Um, our participation by class, 70% of our seniors took an AP in the course of their time at the high school, so that's excellent as well. Uh, we have the largest percentage. As you remember, we implemented a world, a modern world history class that 10th graders could take. They, um, they had a nice, uh, nice group that signed up for that. So again, our numbers, our numbers of students that are taking AP classes is, is very strong and really reflects, um, their, I believe, their goal setting and what they want to do and how they see themselves as students. We have had, um, a number of students that are in the AP scholar buckets. So AP scholars come in three, sort of three buckets. There's an honors level and then an honors with distinction. So a lot of our students are scoring really well on these tests. They're taking more than one test and they're taking it seriously. Remember, these classes are not easy. They are college-level courses and they require rigorous reading and writing skills to go with them, which is why the other test scores are confusing. So this again just shows you that 60% of our seniors earned at least one qualifying score. When we started our AP program and we, um, decided that it would be an open enrollment process, well, we, we made that shift a couple of years into our program. Um, we said that any student that wanted to take a class, we would help them to take that class and we do, um, extra help for our students in the AP track if they, if they choose to access it. One of the things we also use is a thing called AP Potential. It's based on your 10th grade PSATs, which we offer, we offer our PSATs to our students in the 10th and 11th grade here in Pembroke, which is something that every district does. Um, and that tool identifies for kids who would score at a three or better. You can set the parameters and the test has some correlation with a number of tests and I'm going to show you what that looks like. Um, AP 2D Art and Design does not have a correlation with the PSATs, uh, but they are continuing to do, um, to do well in that AP class. There were 10 students that took that last year. I did pull out, if, if a course has fewer than 10 students, we don't share that data publicly because it's considered identifiable. Uh, AP English and Language and Composition, which is a very rigorous junior year class and is correlated highly, um, with reading and mathematics, high level reading and mathematics, um, history and mathematics. Um, you can see that only one student did not qualify in that large group of 30, oh my gosh, I can't even see it.
31.
Over 30, but the thing I want to point out to people is that there were 12 students who self-identified, who were not necessarily identified through AP Potential, who said, I want to take the class and they did well, right? And all of our students that were identified passed. That's a really nice story and tells something about the perseverance and grit of our kids who are willing to put themselves out there and try something that's hard. And that's a really hard class. It's not a, it's a lot of rhetoric. It's very technical. It's, it's a, it's a very worthy class that many colleges like to see on a student's transcript.
So out of 31 students, only one didn't get a three or higher.
Correct.
It's incredible.
Yeah, that's amazing.
It's great.
Again, a smaller group because in AP English and Literature and Composition, that's our senior class, most colleges will only take one AP ELA class, so a lot of our students drop off of the literature and they take something else for an AP, um, as seniors. But again, very strong showing. Um, AP Statistics, once again, six kids self-identified as something that they wanted to do and they did it. Five, five made it through. That's amazing.
Yeah.
So we're talking about students that may have some gaps there and you, what you're seeing here is really, um, aside from the fact that students are working very hard, you're seeing teachers meet them where they're at and helping them to progress and to move.
Yeah, that's huge. I mean, because not every, like you said, we made the choice to, to allow all students to take a course regardless of that.
And that's a little bit harder, right? In the math classes, that means sometimes a student that wants to join an AP class has to accelerate or take two math classes if they're not necessarily in the accelerated track, but they do do that, so it's amazing. Um, this is a group of students that I, I, I love these scores for AP Chemistry. Um, when I first started teaching in Pembroke, there were about six kids that took AP Chemistry. So this is a really, um, exciting thing to see that more and more of our kids are accessing this and again, kids are putting themselves out there, so. AP US History, again, great scores. So that's why I, I think when I opened our conversation tonight and I was saying to you the data is confounding, it's a little bit confusing to me. And these, these are kids that are, um, run, run the gamut. We only have one year of AP World History so far, but, um, again, these are 10th graders taking a college-level class, so something to think about. They're getting very rigorous, um, reading assignments and they're being asked to do very high-level writing, um, courses or, um, assignments as well. I wanted to highlight AP Spanish Language because this is just amazing that we have this many students that are between like 99 and 100% every year. That's quite something.
Yeah.
And a credit to our World Language Department and a World Language Department that is strong all the way from seven to 12. They're an amazing department. They work very hard and they take great pride in the work that they're doing and it also pays off for us in the biliteracy exams. We see a, a great number of our students who are going on to achieve that award as well, which is another great thing that goes on your transcript, to have a biliteracy award.
That's incredible.
It's incredible. This is another wonderful story. So this year was our first year that we offered AP Spanish Literature. Not many schools are able to offer this kind of, um, range of AP courses. Again, students scoring at a very high level, a tremendous credit to our, our World Language Department.
Yeah.
Um, and to the students that are putting themselves out there. It's always hard to be the first class of anything, you know? Nobody's really sure what's going on. So what are we doing right now? As you recall, last year you approved AP Precálculus and AP Seminar. We're keeping an eye on those classes to see that they have everything that they need as we are going forward. Um, our SAT scores, I, you know, again, this isn't sort of something that we're teaching as a discrete skill necessarily. We do give, you know, kids are given practice, some practice, um, problems and what have you, but we don't have SAT courses per se. Students are holding their own in those, um, in those assessments. This just gives you the distribution, how many kids at each level. And the ACT is a small but mighty group of, um, students, about 23 students took it last year and their average score was a 25. A lot of our students try to take both just to see where maybe they might, might have a strength. Uh, the ACT ironically is really more popular in the rest of the United States and the SAT continues to have a stronghold in New England and I think in the east, in the eastern seaboard somewhat, but the rest of the country is using ACT. So our kids are savvy and they're, they're trying them both, so I think that's good. That's all I have for you. It's a lot of information, um, but there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good things here and then, you know, definitely some areas for us to dig into and to try to answer that question why.
Thank you. That was.
Mine.
I've sat through a lot of these over the last nine or so years. Um, that's very impressive. Ladies, any questions or?
I, I asked mine along the way, clearly.
Okay. No, Allison?
Yeah, I think. I mean, honestly, great job. I mean, it, it was a lot of, you know, some of it's disappointing and you deliver the bad news in a really positive way. I appreciate that.
She's been working on that delivery all week.
And I have complete faith that we'll figure it out and turn it around.
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of faith that we are going to identify some of the, what was holding our students back. I really do. Um, people are really committed to this work. They love it. My team is amazing. They are really, they're all in, so I, I know that their enthusiasm and their passion for the work is going to really benefit all of our students.
Yeah. I guess one question I had is just, um, taking a look at the data, like you said, you're diagnosing the problem. Um, how, like, what does that look like in terms of you guys meet, generally speaking?
So it really happens with teachers, right? So the content supervisors meet with the teachers because the teachers know the students that were taking the test.
Okay, got it.
So they, they really have a better profile of what was happening. So they meet, um, with their, the teachers that actually had the students and then they try to meet vertically so that the data is passed along, so that they can see where those students were the year before and then as they're going into a test, where, where they could go.
Okay.
So it happens, that happens more often in department meetings.
Yeah.
And in grade level meetings.
Okay.
In the three to six. Three to six group. Um, our group does talk about it too, but the, the bulk of the work, for example, last week we had a strategic leadership team. This is all we did. So all the administrators in the district had the opportunity to go through these numbers and to look at these things and to identify a question that they have about the data and to try to brainstorm, what is it that we're seeing and why, why do things look the way they look? So it's a good exercise that we do at all levels.
Got it. Okay, so it's kind of integrated in like your professional development?
Into professional development and in department meetings, grade level meetings, admin meetings.
Awesome, yeah. That's helpful.
Just keep doing it all the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Katrina, do you want to?
No, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, can we move on, ladies? Superintendent's report.
Absolutely. The first thing in my report is for you all to discuss and vote on the docket of MASC resolutions that will be presented at next week's conference. So I believe Katrina is your voter?
Yeah.
Yes. So, um, I gave you both the summary of them as well as kind of like a cheat sheet, a quick cheat sheet that, um, Sue had found as a resource to talk about each one of them.
It was an AI resource, just to let you know.
Broke it down a little bit, yep.
My, my question, are we voting on individual?
Yeah, you're voting on whether or not, so if there's something here that you all do not agree with a majority, then we would abstain from voting at the conference, right? I think there was one or two of them last year that we abstained from voting on.
It's so that way, it's the vote that I give is representative of the committee.
Okay.
Not just Katrina Delaney.
No, appreciate that. Should we take them one at a time?
Yep, so there's seven of them for you to.
All right, um, removing BMI testing, any discussion?
I think it makes sense because I do, I think, um, when we think about students with, um, eating disorders, I think we can leave that up to their doctors and not the school.
I'll be honest, I, I do have an issue with this honestly, and I think body mass index and I used to love the president's physical fitness stuff. I just, I don't know what else this consists of, but if we're here to educate the spirit, the mind and the body, this is part of the body and not to have some test measurement fitness level, something to me, it doesn't fit the bill, if that makes sense. Again, I, I don't have enough research on whole issue.
Right, so we screen students and take their BMI at certain grade levels. We don't do anything in our curriculum with that information, so it doesn't inform instruction in a PE class or, or anything like that.
And we're not necessarily testing their fitness level or trying to improve it.
It's just their BMI, yes.
So basically we're testing them and doing nothing with it?
The, I mean, the nurses are logging the information, but it's not used to.
To do anything.
You don't like notify the parents that maybe there's an issue, that they should follow up with their doctor or nothing like that?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Doesn't sound like it.
I think it's shared with families.
We tell, yeah, I, we report back to you, just like your vision and hearing screening. We report the results of the BMI screening, but we don't suggest, we don't make clinical suggestions about that.
So how is this different, for example, than the vision and hearing screening?
If you do not pass the vision or hearing screening, there's, you retake it again and then we do recommend that you go out and seek a eye doctor or audiologist.
Also, so, so for the committee then, like, I would say, like, if we're screening for vision and hearing, this is just another thing, you know, if we're gonna do, we either do all of it or none of it, I feel like. It's like, it's another little measure that you send home to the families to let them know how their child's doing and the family decides from there.
Yeah, but I would say with vision and hearing, you either pass or fail, but the BMI test was, some of the criticisms of it is that it was created in 1832 based on a population of adult men and not children. Um, so there's criticisms of BMI as a measure of health. So that is why I, also part of the reason why I don't necessarily feel like it's, um, we can't equate it to vision and hearing because you either pass or fail, but this is, um, based on a, um, like, a test that is, uh, not as simple as pass or fail. It's based on, uh, not a comparable, um, body.
So, uh, you know, I'm not, so, so when I go to my, um, physical trainer, she uses it to assess how I'm doing and I'm just thinking like, it's not something that's going to change anything. All it is doing is, um, delivering the information to the family to decide what to do next.
But would it be fair to say, like, with the vision and the hearing, there's no negative effect of saying you may have failed it, whereas the BMI, the child may feel self-conscious or like Katrina mentioned, um, the link to possible eating disorders?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the vision and hearing obviously affects your ability to access education.
Yeah.
So we have students that have failed the vision test and, you know, at times that could facilitate or be a catalyst for preferential seating, sitting up front. Um, the, the, the hearing test, we have several staff members that wear an FX system to amplify their voice in the classroom so that students can hear. So we do take that information and make modifications within the classroom. We do not make any modifications with the information that is collected during the BMI.
Has there been any, any feedback from parents saying that they wanted the information on the BMI?
We haven't heard anything.
No.
I don't think parents know you do it.
Yeah, I don't think there's any information either way.
I don't remember my kids having it done at any point, so.
It's required. So you, we do it or you opt out.
Yeah, I don't remember it happening, but I, we, one of the points here it says, health advocates may prefer, uh, reforming the program, not eliminating it. And that's kind of my thought, but I don't know, can we take a vote on it, folks? Um, those in favor? Say aye.
Wait, so hold on. What, what is?
Removing, do we have to do it in a sense of a motion? Or do we have to do it?
Well, no, I just want to make sure, so, so if we say yes, we're saying.
Well, yes is remove BMI testing from schools. Yes or no? But I don't think we have to do it in the form of a motion because it's already here, correct? Or do we have?
You need to do that motion because you are telling Katrina how to vote. So if you, you don't have a majority one way or the other, then she can't vote.
Okay, uh, I will take a motion on the first question to remove BMI testing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed, aye.
Aye.
Abstaining, so it's three, two, I believe?
I think so.
Uh, Christina, I'm sorry, Katrina, Katrina and Allison are voting in the affirmative?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I think so.
Okay, Sue and I are voting negative, so it's three, two.
So Katrina would vote next week in favor of number one?
Okay, right.
Uh, next one is sanctuary laws for transgender students, discussion.
So I, it, I feel like this has nothing whatsoever to do with education. It's just bringing in a, an issue that has nothing to do with, like, I feel like this is something political that's being brought into education and it really has nothing to do with us. It's not going to weigh one way or the other, how we educate the child.
Other feedback, anyone? All right, should we take a motion?
Um, I'm just looking over some of the content.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest, I haven't read all of these yet.
So I, I would like to make a motion for no for sanctuary laws for transgender students.
I think we just have to take a motion to take it up and then we have to vote on it.
Can I make a motion to abstain from this one? I don't know if any of us know enough about it.
Is it abstain or no?
I think we just wouldn't vote.
No, we just, we can vote no, we can vote...
There's no, when they, because I wasn't there, like...
Correct. You just wouldn't raise your hand.
You just don't raise your hand at all?
Yeah.
There's no, you know, people like raising their hands or nothing?
It's not like town meetings.
All right, okay. All right, so shut.
But don't we have to, Erin, don't we have to take each one?
You're taking each one, but you as a committee could direct Katrina to abstain.
Right, so I need a motion to vote on this one way or the other. Well, no, we need a motion. It says sanctuary laws, whoever, our motion is...
To abstain for number two, sanctuary laws for transgender students.
Right, but we need a motion to, to vote on. You know what I'm saying? We can't vote.
No, the motion that Sue's making is that you all abstain from voting on this one.
Okay.
So if that passes, then you don't have, you don't need a second.
Okay, is, anyone want to second that motion?
Hold on, these are the six resolutions that are set to expire unless we authorize. So if I remember correctly...
It was seven, but...
I can't remember if we had these last year or they did them all at once.
They're every three years.
But did they take them all as one or did they? I'm just trying to remember.
I wasn't there.
I know, so I'm trying to remember.
You did them separately. We did use separate authorization for each one.
For each one separately.
So they only have one new one this year? Is that how I'm reading this? There's only one new resolution?
Well, they're asking if you want to extend this as a priority.
Correct. But, because last year there was a whole slew of new resolutions.
Right.
So if I'm reading this correctly, there's only one new resolution. The rest of them are ones that are previously, so the way, so, so, school districts can put in resolutions. So resolution one is a new one.
Yeah.
That would then be a priority for MASC.
The rest of it is reauthorization.
So the other seven here have ones that were previously passed MASC.
Yeah.
And are set to expire because the priorities have not moved through the legislative process.
Exactly.
Okay, just making sure that where I am is the same as what's happening.
So again, the motion is, I motion to abstain on reauthorization of the sanctuary laws for transgender students.
All right, so you have a motion or a second?
Can I, can we, can I just take a second? Sorry, I just wanted to finish reading this part.
If not, there's nothing we can do on it. There's no second.
Please second.
I'll second it then, there we go. Okay, so if we take a yes vote, it's in favor of abstaining, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of abstaining, please vote yea.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so nays?
No.
No.
Oh.
So now you all need to vote on whether, on which way you want to vote on this one?
I'll make a motion to vote yes on sanctuary laws.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to vote to pass this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Aye. At three, two, it's going to pass. Onto number three, raise special education reserve cap from two percent to five percent.
That'll be great, guys. So right now, we are only allowed at the end of the year to move two percent of our costs associated with special education to our special education reserve.
Something, right?
Anything, so let's say we spend $2 million on special education. If we have money left at the end of the year that we want to move into stabilization, that's capped at two percent of that spending. This would raise the cap to five percent.
Five percent.
It allows us, we most often don't have five percent left over that we can move, but it gives us the flexibility to go above.
That's right.
So I make a motion to raise the special education reserve cap as, you know, a yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I love that.
Any more votes?
Still have nap again.
I know, you just put it out there. We have three more years to get there.
Yeah, it's all like advocacy, right? It's like we're not actually changing the laws of these.
Okay, allow educated and school community members on the state board of ed.
I think this would be a terrible idea because we'd have union members on that making the rules, and I feel like it's a conflict of interest.
So I, the way I look at this is that they exclude teachers from being able to participate. That's, if I, if I remember correctly from this, not all teachers have to be part of unions, but the way DESI is set up, they, teachers are not allowed to participate in DESI.
Well, again... To sit on the board.
To sit on the board. It, this isn't, if they came up with a way to say, if you're not in the union, then you can participate, then I might be a yes, but in this case, there is no way to do that, so I'm no on it. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, there's no way to guarantee that, it's such a conflict of interest. So basically, we go into negotiations with the union, but then the people making the rules...
But it's also school committee members. I mean, right now, you can't have...
I understand, but I just think it needs to be written, rewritten. This is not, I just think this would be a bad idea to have, unfortunately, it's bundled together, and I just think it's, it's just a conflict of interest, and for me, it's a hard, like, I, I think it's a dangerous precedent to have.
Yeah, I, one, I hear you. The one thing I'm also, I read with this was that the teaching profession is the only profession or trade in Massachusetts where the holders of the license are prohibited from serving on its governing board.
Yeah, but there's a reason, because it's unionized and, and like, for example, in the real estate profession, I serve on a board, but I am not in a union. So I just think it's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, but there's also like other professions that have unions and they are on the governing board.
Well, I don't know, I just disagree with the...
So if you were in a union, would you not be allowed to sit on that?
I don't know, we would never unionize. It's just not the kind of...
I'm just, I was just curious.
But like, I just think it's a dangerous way to go. I think it's a bad... So I think it's unfortunate that it's lumped together, right? So I think COVID really showed us, and you all as a board, that it would be great if you had more power in decisions that were made for the state, right? Because what we were hearing and seeing in Pembroke didn't necessarily align with the information that we were, that we were getting. I can appreciate what Sue's saying. At the same time, I think, as a local board, you were crying out for the opportunity to have a seat at the table during some of those decisions. So it's unfortunate that it's lumped together.
Exactly. It's very unfortunate. And again, if they came up with a different way of wording this and took out, you know, made some sort of a rule where you can't be in a union and to participate, or like something, I would be for it, but the way it's written...
Yeah, but that's, it's discriminatory. You can't say if someone's in the union, they can't belong to something. I, I get the principle of what you're trying to say, but you can't...
Right, I think it would be important to talk about like the maximum number of people that, so that they don't have a voting majority necessarily, but none of that seems to be included.
Yeah, none of it's included. So like if they rewrote it, like I, I might get on board with that. They just, the way it's written is not good.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we do not support this one. Is there a second?
A second.
I got a second from Sue. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed?
I'm abstaining. I don't know.
One abstaining. So Natalie, it's three, I'm sorry, Katrina, what, are you an a or an a or an abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, it's three, zero, and two abstain, if that's okay.
So we'll abstain. Okay.
No, so you're voting no.
No.
Okay, voting no.
Yeah, please.
So you're voting no, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that's for number four.
The next one is preserve local school governance, limit state takeovers, requires local contracts to be controlled and be restored within three years for any district placed in receivership. Restore controlled warrants in South Bridge by 2026.
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts on this one?
Are we in warrants or South Bridge? Why do we get a vote?
I know, right?
Well, I think the problem is when you go into receivership, you know, I just remember Chelsea was in receivership, it seemed for my entire career.
Yeah, so in fairness, I don't obviously have a say or a vote, but I think it's important when you think about how long it takes to effectively make change, that's five years. It takes five years to effectively make change.
Yeah.
So, in all facets of the world, so.
Yeah.
So they've had some of these schools...
For a long time, right? But this is saying that the max you could have a school is three years.
Which I don't think solves the problem.
Okay, yeah, all right, that makes sense. Thanks for that perspective.
Yeah, so...
Again, I don't live or work in South Bridge.
I'm gonna make a motion, we do not support this.
Second.
Okay, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? We will vote against that one, please, Katrina.
So that's number five, no. All right.
And I do admire the discussion, thank you very much for this. Require personal financial literacy education. Make personal finance required part of the K through 12 curriculum.
Second.
So all students, financially literate, I, I think this is a no-brainer. I am gonna make a motion that we support this.
A second.
So I think it's great that you support it. You should all support it in addition to the funding associated with requiring financial literacy education be provided to all students.
Yeah.
I think I saw there's some...
And what are we taking away?
It's not mandated. It's a mandate.
And let's not make it an unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that these resolutions don't have the power to actually do anything except to advocate, right?
And I think for the most part, MASC advocates for money, too.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And we do offer financial literacy. We do have that as part of our program of studies at the high school for students to take, so.
All right, so we have a motion, we said to support this, so there was a second, I believe?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, we're voting for that, if you don't mind, Katrina. Create a regional school assessment reserve fund. Let towns and regional districts save money to offset large annual spikes in their regional school assessments. I am not gonna lie, I read this about four times, and I don't totally understand it.
Do you want me to help you?
Yes, if you don't mind.
I'm Thomas Bess, but this is not a regional school district. So similar to what we do with special, special education and having a special education stabilization fund, we put money, money aside in case in one year that there's an unpredicted spike for us. This would allow regional school districts to do the same thing, just with general operating expenses. So if for some reason your assessment last year was a million and next year it's 1.5 million, you could use a reserve fund to offset that spike.
But this is them putting their money, not us putting money.
That's their money. No, it's their own money.
Okay, I wasn't sure they were asking us to help bail out the regional school system, I'm saying, why would we do that? But, okay.
It's their money, so I, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna, again, a motion that we support this.
Sure. Second.
I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, we'll support that. We'll take care of our friends in regional systems, is that it?
That's it.
Would you mind if I review what they were? Okay, so for number one, I had yes. Number two, yes. Number three, yes. Number four, no. Number five, no. Number six, yes. Number seven, yes.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
And Katrina, thank you for doing that. That's a very important job, and I truly appreciate the effort.
Yeah, not a problem. Happy to.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I haven't written anything yet.
So the next item under my report is just to give you guys an update on the fiscal year 26 budget freeze. So you'll remember back in June, I recommended the freezing of a series of positions and the elimination of a couple of other positions in hopes to allow some financial capacity for liabilities associated with collective bargaining. We were fortunate at the October 21st town meeting to receive an additional $452,000 in our budget, both as a combination of changes in new growth as well as the $182,000 increase to chapter 70. So I am recommending this evening that we unfreeze some of those positions. I'm gonna walk you through the ones that I'm recommending and the reasons why they're not all being recommended. So at the elementary level, I am recommending that we unfreeze the clerical paras. So you'll remember, there's a clerical para in each one of our elementary schools that helps with special education paperwork. It has been definitely a burdensome, burdensome task for our team chairs at the elementary level to be running all those meetings, scheduling all those meetings and doing all of the paperwork. In addition, at your, during our fiscal year 26 budget conversation, you all approved a budget that included a math interventionist for the elementary level. I recommend unfreezing that posting as well. We also had wonderful conversations in the spring about a behavioral program at Habimach. I would recommend unfreezing each of the pieces to that program. So that's a special education teacher, an RVT, and a BCBA.
Love it.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. The high school's a little bit different. There are some positions that we froze there that I wouldn't recommend unfreezing at this time. So we did freeze a long-term sub for English and a physics position, or really just a science position at the high school. It would be difficult to open up those positions now after we've already built students' schedules. So I'm not recommending unfreezing them. They are built into your next fiscal year budget, but at this point, that would be disruptive to our student schedules. I am recommending that you unfreeze the librarian at Pembroke High School, as well as the point four business position for a semester to start. So it would be a January start, but it would allow us to schedule students into courses that currently they're in study halls for.
Okay.
There's two other positions. There's a director of counseling, a coordinator of counseling position. I'm not recommending that you unfreeze that at this time. That position, as you'll remember, was partially grant funded. I want to get a little bit more information on the stability of that grant before we bring somebody onboard for six months and potentially lay them off. So I would not unfreeze that at this time. And the other only position floating out there is the elementary library para. Because we're partially through the first term here, there isn't a way to reintroduce that rotation across the three schools equitably. So I am not recommending unfreezing that at this time.
All right, if we unfreeze this, what's the cost of this 452? Are we spending almost the whole thing?
No.
Or is there any, does the leftover money go back? Or do we sit on it?
No, so that's just our money, right? So we, we froze these positions to allow us some flexibility in collective bargaining. We are not at a place where we have settled our collective bargaining yet, but we are almost there, hopefully, right? But this, this allows us to unfreeze and still have some room in our operating budget to settle this year's contracts and plan out for next year.
Do you have like a cost associated with unfreezing these positions?
I have, not till we know who the people are.
No, just the...
I mean, a ballpark cost, I mean, was, are we spending 400 or the 452? What do you think we're spending?
So you already budgeted for all of these, right? You budgeted for them in your fiscal year 26 budget, and we froze them.
All right, that's...
So they already exist in your budget. The 452 allows us some additional flexibility, so we no longer need to freeze those positions.
That makes sense.
Do we have to take a vote on this?
You don't, because I get to decide.
There we go.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because this kind of came up locally yesterday. So we can't direct you to any of this based on what I've heard.
You cannot. So I am the decider of hiring and firing ultimately of every position in the district other than my own. So if I say to you, we're going, there's a budget for these, you've already approved a budget that includes them, so if I say to you, I'm hiring, I'm gonna hire these 14 people in the positions you've already approved, I'm just, it's informational.
We voted, we voted to freeze it, though, right?
I recommended a freeze. You didn't vote.
We didn't vote a freeze.
No.
All right.
Well, a lot of these I'm really excited about, I think.
I think it's great, I know the more.
And all of them are built into the fiscal year '27 base, so then none of them are being held off as a cut, anything that you agreed to, I'm not saying it'll survive the process, but it is in, that they build it out, so.
So would these get posted soon?
They will post, hopefully, I'll look at Natalie tomorrow or Monday. So with some of these positions, with the clerical paras in particular, it starts a host of bumping, right? So there are definitely people that are classroom-based instructional paras that will be looking for the clerical para and then we'll backfill that, so it'll take probably a little bit of time before we work our way all the way through. To the point that you were making, Allison, there are some reductions that are happening in other communities near us, so we are hopeful that there'll be some strong candidates in the pool, but if there are not strong candidates in the pool, we are not hiring just to hire. If there is not strong candidates, we will wait to the spring when the pools are much deeper.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, I was gonna ask.
I'm more optimistic now than I was a month ago, because I think there is going to be some talent in the pools.
Yeah.
Which is great.
I did see one school district is taking a 30-day pause, but that doesn't mean that after that.
They ended that.
They ended that.
Oh, I can't keep up.
That was undone yesterday.
They found out, it basically came out that the school committee has no authority, legal authority to vote that, so the superintendent has the power to hire and fire, regardless of what the school committee.
I am glad that we will benefit from that, but sad for that school district.
Yeah, we don't know the specifics of those positions, I have heard there are some guidance positions in there, so we have a guidance counselor, Mr. Sheehan at the high school, that was retiring in December anyways, and December's generally a tough time to fill, so it's great that there's gonna be some potential up there.
I'm so excited.
So in this case, and this is, do you offer the positions back to the people who were, or how does that work? It just gets posted?
The only one that was an existing position is the librarian at the high school. All of our members in Unit Eight have 24-month callback rights, so once we open the position, she has the first right of refusal for that. For the paraprofessional piece, only one of the three folks that were functioning in that clerical role at the elementary level is still in the district. Obviously, you know, we would offer for her to go back to that, but she may love the new positions that she's in in the district as well, so she would have first right of refusal on that.
And then obviously, the sped program is all new.
It's brand-new.
And that's three positions?
So it's a teacher, an RVT, and a BCBA. The BCBA is partially in there and partially funded through some of our grant money for the behavioral health grant, so.
There are no paras?
The RVT is.
That's, sitting there, okay.
It's a para with additional training.
And that could be up and running once filled, like shifts would happen.
Correct, but again, we wanna make sure that the staff is, staff that we wanna have for a long time, so.
Yeah, so we'd have to make.
Ninety percent of it is like directly affecting the kids in the instruction, so I think that's really value-add.
So it'll depend on if we get quality candidates to be able to build it out, versus just hiring based on what we have, we have to be certain.
We need to establish to be able to share with families, this is an established program.
Right, right, yeah, that makes sense.
I'm really glad to hear that.
We need to hire, hire well, versus hiring whatever's there.
All right, let's jump into the FY '26 first quarter financials.
So in your packet, you have just an update of kind of where we are as of October 31st. You'll see that there's definitely some money available in our tuition lines. Again, we have a couple of placeholders still at this point, I am still planning, as I start the FY '27 budget process, to do some special education tuition pre-buy if I can, so that's why there's such a large number there. We also have not received the first quarter bills for our students that are at Norfolk Aggie, so we have about $550,000 of tuition that was expected to go there. Our salary lines, I would expect to be expended by the end of the year, as you can imagine. There are a couple of places where you'll see either a positive or a negative, so under transportation, you'll see that if you just kind of at a glance today, we're $183,000 over the budget that we set. Keep in mind that we take an end-of-year $150,000 offset from the transportation revolving account, so we are not really over budget there. There's also some ebbs and flows in transportation, if we combine buses or routes change over the course of the year, we, you know, we lower the purchase order for our first student. There's definitely some places where there's purchase orders under contracted services that have a blanket dollar amount on them, like 75,000, at the end of the year, it could come in at 60,000, so there's a few places there. The place that I'm probably going to spend the most attention looking at over the next couple of months is our utility lines. That seems to be the place where, at the end of the year, we're either really close or really far off. So this year in particular, I wanna keep an eye on heating of buildings and utility services. Last year, I think we ended up right on for heat, but over, with, I think, about $102,000 left over in utility services, so I wanna monitor each month, so if there's something that we could do with those excess dollars during this school year to the benefit of students, I'd rather do that than wait and put it off for pre-buys or some of the capital or curricular items that we talk about towards the end of the school year.
Do you think that you, are you able to use some of that to add heat or and or AC to specific offices? Just wondering, like, you don't have to feel like.
So every space is designed to have heat in all of our buildings.
I understand.
Not every space is designed to have air conditioning. We've had some conversations at the middle school and elementary schools about air conditioning. We are not able to just stick a window unit in to the classroom, so fire code dictates that those type of appliances need to be plugged directly into an outlet, as opposed to an extension cord. We don't have any outlets along the windows in any of those buildings, so it's a little bit bigger than that. But we have and will continue to use any overage or excess surplus, hate that word after a couple of years ago, surplus, in those accounts to address some of the HVAC issues that we have across the district, so.
Erin, the number that jumped out at me is the district-wide substitutes. We budgeted 396, we've only used, for the first quarter, 32,000.
Because the payrolls are behind, so as of 10/31, you've only paid for like four payrolls.
Okay.
And.
I wasn't sure, are we not getting substitutes?
Yeah, we don't, as every district in the state of Massachusetts is having a difficult time finding substitutes, we have our fair share of that as well. What happens if we're unable to fill a position with a substitute? We do offer class coverage to different categories of employees, that class coverage payment hits their salary line, and at the end of the year, I deducted from substitute, so there's some kind of balance sheet work that happens at the end.
Yeah, I thought we were really saving money, wow, we're doing really well there.
No, we would love subs, we actually went up on our daily sub rate to see if we could attract some more folks, so we are optimistic that that will really be positive.
Standing, all right, so.
The last thing under my report, similar to years past, Brian Phillips in the athletic department is requesting a waiver for eighth graders to participate in girls' ice hockey at Pembroke High School. We have had this waiver in place for the past seven years, I believe, since we stopped our co-op with Whitman Hansen. Last year, we had 19 students, including eighth graders, we graduated three seniors. This year, we have 15 girls without eighth graders, so Brian is looking for the opportunity and flexibility to add a few more girls to the roster there for the high school.
Do we have one team or two teams?
We only have a varsity team.
Now, we have to vote on that, I'm assuming?
You need to vote.
Motion to approve the MIAA eighth grade waiver.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five-nothing, unanimous, Natalie.
Under policy sub, you have for consideration of second read and approval, policy IKFE, competency determination, so we talked about this at your September meeting. As a first read, you'll remember that there is a requirement that we upload our policy to a database for the state. Originally, that deadline was October 31st, but it has been moved to December 31st, so we do have a little bit of time here.
Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Motion to approve, this is a second read, policy IKFE competency determination.
Second.
All right, you have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Natalie, five-nothing? Thank you, Patrick, it's unanimous. Negotiation Subcommittee.
So we continue to meet with the Pembroke Teachers Association in efforts to negotiate our core successor contracts for our units. Our next meeting is Monday, November 10th. We have really gotten through a lot of issues in all of the units, there's, I'd say fewer than I can count on one hand, what's left for us to work through in addition to the financial piece associated with that. So the goal on Monday is to tackle some of the financials. I think everybody in the room is starting to get antsy about kind of getting it settled as we start to look towards the end of the calendar year, so hopefully that energy will give us some momentum on Monday, and we'll be talking the next time about some ratified agreements, so.
Excellent, great. And thank you, all the negotiation negotiators.
Just what number are we on, 17?
Monday will be our 17th meeting.
I know, it's been a ton of work, and I appreciate all of you for all you're doing, I know it's a lot.
You know, like, it's very time-consuming, so.
Just gonna add that Policy will also be meeting on the 10th.
We're meeting on Monday at 2:00, yes. There's a host of items that we're looking at in preparation for our DESE site visit on December 1st, 1st or 2nd 1st. Vocational planning, so obviously, we were all at town meeting, and there was a favorable vote to continue to move forward with joining South Shore Tech, so I think the vocational planning Subcommittee's gonna get together again, kind of do a once-over on our FAQs and update it to some of the questions that we had heard at town meeting, and then talk a little bit about mapping out a calendar of information sessions as we get kind of into January, when the numbers at South Shore Tech will be firmer, and we can be talking to people about actual numbers instead of estimates. So, I anticipate a meeting with that group in the next week or two to kind of plan out our, I like to call it a traveling circus, but our education series. There's one that I forgot, so the Strategic Planning Committee had our first meeting last week, last Wednesday. We have our next meeting next Wednesday. At our last meeting, we spent a good portion of the time discussing mission and vision and core beliefs. I think that's always a fun exercise, when you bring different people to the table. We do have three student representatives, two students from the middle school and a student from the high school, and I think everybody in the room was in awe of their ability to just kind of sit at the table and participate as an equal part, and their voice really matters, and we are optimistic that the process will really deliver a plan that is representative of this community and the needs that we see in our schools. So there's six more meetings of the committee, and a draft of the plan should be to you guys probably by the end of January.
Do we have any parents on that?
There is five parents on it.
Five parents, please.
It's a good mix of.
That's fantastic.
There's five parents, three teachers, three students, Allison, and 11 administrators.
And is the survey back?
The survey closes on November 7th.
November 7th.
So Sharon will push out one more time in the morning tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
Just to let people know that they have the rest of the day tomorrow to fill it out, but we have, I think, almost 1,200 responses, so.
Oh, wow.
I think our data meeting is Tuesday.
Our data meeting is next Wednesday, 11:12, and we will be able to look at the survey responses at that point.
Oh, that's fantastic. Take it if you haven't already.
Okay, future meeting dates and topics, I know we have the 18th at 6 o'clock here.
So you have the 18th at 6 o'clock here, here's your friendly reminder that you owe Natalie your feedback on the superintendent evaluation by Monday, the 10th. When I checked in with her yesterday, she had only received one so far.
Ooh, way to go, whoever that was.
Yeah, only one, which is.
Not it.
I sent mine today, but I'm gonna revise, because I need more time.
So then you didn't send it in?
No, I sent it today. Oh, yeah, that's true.
Just kidding. I anticipate we're gonna have some policy stuff to kind of work through based off of our meeting on Monday. I am still planning on giving you maintenance of effort on November 18th. I will email you all after our meeting on the 10th to tell you if I think that's a possibility or not. It is very difficult to give a budget for a year from now, when this year's budget is not certified yet, there's not a lot of value to it, right? Because I'm making double the assumptions I would be making in any given year, and I just feel like, no matter what the number is, once we put a number out there, we're always working backwards towards that number, so I want that number to be as close as possible to really where I see us going in fiscal year '27, so Monday will give me a good feel for that, and we'll go from there.
And we really need to be pretty close to closing the contract.
Yes.
Is budget sub, are we due for a meeting?
We would meet before I present meetings.
And then my other question for, and I don't know if this would be budget or long-term planning, but I'd like to see we pass the resolution to allow cameras for the bus stop signs, I'd like to start investigating either that being like a capital warrant item, or grant, or legislative grant through somebody, but I'd like to have that be something that we have kind of be part of the discussion somewhere.
Yep, I think that would be a long-range planning conversation, but.
Okay, so maybe, because I think we talked about something else, a long-range planning to one of our meetings, I don't remember.
The other two playgrounds.
Okay, so can we have that happen soon-ish, maybe?
We can.
Because I'd like, because I think the bus cameras are important, and we might be able to get funding in state and/or capital item.
Sure.
All right, do we put some dates out there? We have the 18th with December 2nd.
It's Christmas Day, a Tuesday, let's see.
So we have the 18th.
Probably negotiating on that day.
Probably. So the first Tuesday in December would be the 2nd, and the 3rd would be the 16th.
It's worked for me.
Those both work for me.
And both will be at 6?
Yes.
I don't know if it's worth going into the new year.
Maybe for the first one.
Because I would love for it not to be on the 6th, but, why, what's this, Cora's first band concert, for some reason, they're making it the same day?
Wait on the 16th?
No, I'm January 6th.
Oh. I said we booked January, I mean, we booked December, then we figure out January.
No, I think we just did December, right, the 2nd and 16th.
Yeah, maybe we can.
I just don't know if you'd be ready for a meeting the day after we get back, I mean, if it is, I'll figure it out, but.
What do we have going on that time of year?
That's where we get all the fun presentations, right?
That's when you start to see that, you know, as we turn into January, we start to talk about what we're seeing for the curricular investments that you made.
Program of studies.
Do we wanna just schedule it for the following week?
Yeah, the 13th and then the 20th, or something.
Do you see any problem there? Like having it, moving it one week out?
No, 1-13.
Okay, I mean.
Because that would mean two meetings back-to-back. I would make it work, but when I saw that one, I was like, ooh, that one's gonna hurt.
All right, so we're gonna say January 13th?
January 20th, potentially.
Okay.
January 20th.
We can always move it if we have to.
I would appreciate that.
I don't have a problem with it, if it doesn't affect the planning, then that's fine.
Mary Beth and I love a great winter concert, so we do.
Yeah, I mean, I like it, too, so, yeah, all right, 1-13.
Elementary band, I think it's two, you get two of the schools in one, so.
That just makes it extra long, but thanks.
Bryantville and crowded, Bryantville and.
That'll probably be the unified spring's night, string's night.
Okay. Perfect.
So we do have an executive session.
Yep, all right, so executive, gonna need a motion, we're going to executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy related to collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. By roll call, oh, we have a move, a motion, and we have a second. Katrina, to my far right?
Yes.
Allison, to my right?
Yes.
Sue, to my left?
Yes.
And Katrina, to my left?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five-nothing. We are going into executive session, to our viewing audience, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.